Call this study session of the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Alright, so we are here to talk about the update on the wastewater treatment plant. So Matt, this is your show, so take it away.
Well, I brought friends.
The more, the merrier.
So, I'll kind of give introduction. So, I've got Pete Earls tonight, and he'll give the majority of this deal. And then, of course, Dr. Bailey. I don't know if you all know, but Chris Farinacci runs our wastewater plant. He's the day-to-day, takes the majority out, so does a great job. So, back in September, we asked you all as a commission to engage with Pete for a preliminary engineering study regarding our wastewater treatment plant. A couple of those details were, we have, our current wastewater permit is running five-year cycles. Our permit just expired in April, last week, April 30th, last week. And we have a new draft permit with lots of changes, none of which are earth-shattering. We knew they were coming. So, to move forward and look at what we need to do, we need to kind of capture our past and then start to plan, and so that everyone gets on the same page with where we've been. And Pete's going to get through some of that in his work. So, in his proposal that we brought before you, we asked him to break it down in certain criteria. And this is the start. I believe he put that this is fun reading, you should enjoy it, take a weekend. But, it reviews where we're at as far as our current demands, our future demands. We realized that it sometimes is about more than ourselves. So, we've looked for some potential future growth, other communities. We made sure the bubble was realistic and, but encompassing enough. This is a big deal, and what it needs to be. As he wraps up, you know, a second part of his study would be then, create the scenarios. Do we review our rates? Areas of possible, if we needed a new one? And then, what the feasibility? Does it all work? Can we get it to all mesh? And so, with that, I'm going to kind of turn it over to Pete and let him go through his initial findings, this report, and kind of give you the synopsis of the reading material you have in front of you.
Thanks, Matt. Like you said, that's a full report. We'll just go through it, a little bit shortcut perhaps, give you a little bit of background on what we looked at. If I can figure out how to work this thing. I guess it's not touchscreen.
The right arrow.
There you go. Okay, the background, we take a look at what the wastewater treatment plant was actually, the first part of it was constructed in 1952. And that consisted of pump station, which obviously gets it to the treatment plant. Open bar screen, that was basically, it's a screen about an inch and a half in diameter. Basically catches all the big stuff coming down. The aeration basin, basically puts oxygen into the water in order to start the treatment process. Clarifiers, basically that's your first row of settling, taking out the larger particles that will settle out. And then, it had two trickling filters. In that timeframe, that was the design concept. A trickling filter is basically a large container of rocks that basically grows the bacteria on it. You played water on it, and that's how you do your treatment process. Clarifier. The final clarifier is basically just that to clear out the floatables or the solid, excuse me, the settleables out. And then, of course, the final water coming out. The anaerobic digesters, that's basically how you treat the sludge. Anaerobic simply means no air. And then, they had drying beds, which are still out there. Taking a look, this is a hard one to see. This is from 1952. But basically, we can see it better later on. But, you've got your main pump station here, your aeration basin, farm area clarifiers, your trickling filters, and there was your final clarifier. And at that time, it just ran a direct pipe out to the creek. 1978, plant was upgraded, added another final clarifier, still using trickling filters, a screen house, which was just a better filtration of the materials coming in, and an effluent pump station. There's a little better concept of what's out there at that time. They added this screw pump, could lift it out, and obviously, it probably flooded at the time. And then, added this greenhouse here. 1991, was upgraded again. Added extraneous flow pump station, which basically to bypass the water around the treatment plant directly to the creek. It added a cascading discharge structure, which is nothing more than steps to try to add aeration, air, rather, oxygen to the water before it's discharged into the stream.
That bypass was for stormwater? It wasn't for sewer that?
This was actually just the discharge point for everything. Before, it was simply a pipe going out. They put in the pump station, which lifted it up, but it still was just an open channel. And so, at this time, 91 is when they actually concreted that channel and actually put a drop in there to try to add some oxygen to the water before it went to the creek. And that's kind of the layout back then. That was their extraneous flow pump. And at that point, was reconcreted, and that's just your steps. It doesn't really show too well, but that's kind of what it, if you've been out there, you can see what basically it dropped through there. In 1993, the biggest problem was ammonia. Trickling filters don't really take care of ammonia. The state came in with a dig to basically reduce the ammonia. So, at that point, they put in, suspended both reactor, which is the Schreiber process, which is basically the treatment process, which went to a biological nutrient removal or a batch reactor. Basically, air on, air off, that's how you got, basically break ammonia down into nitrogen gas. And, so that was added to the process. And so, out there, you still have your old treatment process. And inside here, they added the Schreiber process with its own clarifier. And then, they had to go to an anaerobic, or excuse me, an aerobic digester, just because it's a different type of sludge, and a thickener unit. So, now, at that point, you basically switched processes, though you kept the trickling filter process up and running, basically because of the excess flow that's coming through to do a partial treatment on that. Continued on, 1999, you added UV disinfection. UV, it basically ultraviolet light to kill all the E. coli back then. Basically, the bacteria that's still in the water, kill it before it gets into your stream. And a belt press. Belt press basically thickens the sludge. Instead of using drying beds, you went through the belt press to thicken it, and then you could just basically load it out in the back of dump trucks. 2002, the anaerobic digesters, those are the ones built back in 1952, were upgraded. And they put a building around your belt press. 2006, the trickling filter was worked on. 2010, you upgraded your main pump station. Last year, you worked again on the trickling filters, trying to upgrade those with new motors and so on. The current plant's designed for about 3 MGD, million gallons per day, with a peak flow of about 5 MGD. That kind of looks at what your existing plant looks like. Here, you can see the old plant, the trickling filter process. And this is the revised plant that was put in in 1993. Little better picture of it here. And you can see, it's still in operation, they're still using this process today for excess flow, which is kind of what this one's trying to show. Basically, flow up to about 5 MGD, 5 million gallons a day, comes through the plant. This is your pump station. This is the aeration basin. The aeration basin is for the old trickling filters. Part of the water does continue to go through the trickling filters, because if you ever want to use them, you've got to keep the bugs alive, which means you've got to feed them. So, part of the water continues to go through the trickling filter, and then it's taken over to the nitrification process. Majority of the water goes straight over to your, I call it the Schreiber process. And then, it goes to this clarifier and discharges out through the cascade. When it's over that 5 MGD, 5 to 18 million gallons a day, that excess of over 518 goes through just the trickling filter process, through their clarifiers and is discharged. So, it partially treats the infiltration water. And if you think over 18 million, basically goes to the extraneous flow screw pump, and it basically pumps directly to the river. And there's no treatment in that water at all. These pictures are just showing the, this one is the old aeration basin. Again, that's having to do with the old trickling filter system, built back in 1952. As you can tell, the condition of it is poor at best. It's seen its better days. That's the pump station. Mainly, again, this structure was built in 1952. Again, the, as age has taken its toll on the structures. These are the trickling filters, they're cracked and leaking. Again, this is from 1952. These are structures of, we're still using them. And amazingly, they've been maintained quite well, realizing they're 66 years old. This is the old anaerobic digester, again, built in 1952. It was rehabbed once, I believe in 78. Again, it's, the seal is what you're looking at here. There's a seal, this is a floating cover. And the seal, again, is pretty much gone. Again, it's from 1952. This is the Schreiber unit. This is built 25 years ago. And the concrete there, again, is cracked, and they've split. They've worked on it, it's crushing on the top. A Schreiber unit, basically, this rotates all the way around continuously, and it's got air on, so it goes air on, air off, as it circles around there. And it's a contained unit. And that's the treatment inside that one basin is its concept. Quickly summarize, basically the plant, 66 years old. Obviously, a lot of additions and upgrades throughout the years. Numerous problems with the age of the plant being concrete spalled, reinforcing steel, et cetera. As you know, as concrete cracks, in those days, we didn't coat the steel. So, it's just straight steel. It gets wet, it expands, furthers the crack, and then so on. It continues until deterioration takes over. It's been maintained, obviously, extremely well over the years. When you realize that the newest part of the plant's 25 years old, the oldest part is 66 years old. Not saying that 66 is that old, I'm just saying. But, a lot of things, obviously, are in bad condition. As we talked to Chris, slide gates that don't work, underground valves and underground piping. As you can imagine, in those days, it's all cast. Seen its better days, as we talked about the digester covers. Trickling filters, problem with keeping them alive is you take out the nutrients that you need to do the actual treatment. It's ratios that you need in order to take out the nutrients. And by keeping them alive, you take out the nutrients that you need for the other plant. And of course, you increase maintenance every year. When you're trying to maintain something that old, you continue to pour money into that situation. As we look at our current plant, what we have right now, our current flow is close to that 3 MGD, 3 million gallons a day. Our largest industry is Sugar Creek, about 120,000 gallons a day. We talked a little bit about infiltration. Infiltration is basically rainwater getting into our sanitary sewer. The biggest problem we have is because most of our pipe is clay tile. Clay tile is laid in four-foot chunks. And with that, you get a lot of serpentine action, you get a lot of cracking on the bells. And as groundwater comes up, it simply flows into the storm, our sanitary sewer system. As we look at what's been noted, it's, flows from, or excess flow, rather, goes from 1.3 million gallons a day to 26 million gallons a day. And when you have multiple days of rain, we have as much as 65.3 million gallons a day that bypass the treatment facility. The city continues to do lots of projects to help that infiltration. And you've done a good job, and you continue to do that by lining manholes, lining sewers, et cetera, to try and eliminate, which you never will, but reduce the amount of infiltration that's occurring in your system. So, as we look at the future plant, we take a look at first the population. Population in 1990 was about 17,007.35. 2016 is about 20,003.60. As we look 20 to 30 years down the road, we're looking at a population of about 25,000. Part of, part of what we look at is trying to come up with what kind of a flow are we looking at 20 to 30 years from now? And of course, it's a best guess scenario at anything. But we take a look at what we have for land development and so on. KDHNE uses a real high value of 5,000 gallons per day and 10,000 gallons per day for commercial and industrial. We do a little more realistic at 1,000 gallons per day for commercial and 2,000 for industrial. So, we looked at what you have around, and that's the airport industrial park, which is about one-third industrial and two-thirds commercial. If we assume in 20 to 30 years that we have 40% development, that would add about 112,000 gallons per day. If we look at Sugar Creek's possible expansion, that would add another 500,000 gallons per day. If we look at the possible US 69 corridor, based on KDOT's concept, there's 695,000 acres of commercial and 1,695 acres of industrial. Assuming a 20% development over the next 20 to 30 years, you see an additional flow of about 789,000 gallons per day. The other area we looked at is users. There's several sewer users currently within the city limits. Assuming in the next 20 to 30 years that they come in, that would add another 19,500 gallons per day. Outside the city, in the one- to two-mile radius, as the city continues to expand, there's approximately 760 current homes, which would add about 223,000 gallons a day. And a possibility of about 670 additional homes in that one- to two-mile radius for another 200,000 gallons per day. So, just summing all those up, you come up with about 5.5 million gallons per day as an average future flow. And hydraulically, that, basically looking at that as far as how much can you put through the plant in a rain event, and that comes up to about 11 million gallons a day. So, as we look at the future, obviously, what we look at is what KDHNE is coming up with in the future regulations. Part of that is the total nitrogen, TKN10, for total kinetic nitrogen. And that has to be less than 8 milligrams per liter or parts per million, it's the same thing. Total phosphorus, you're looking at trying to get down below 1.5 milligrams per liter. We're looking at what to do with that excess water. One possibility may be to create a basin. And a lot of the towns that currently have lagoons or non-discharging systems, in order to get away from discharge, or problems with discharge, we build what we call an evaporation and seepage lagoon. Just a big area to hold the water in a rain event. In this case, we'd probably have to put a pump-back system so that we could slowly draw it back into the plant. But the idea is to get it out there, let it seep into the ground. In KDHNE, that's what we're doing, a lot of smaller communities, to do just that, to eliminate the problems with discharging raws. In this case, they still call it wastewater, we call it extraneous flow. But it's still, because it's in the wastewater system. So, taking a look at the possibility 20 to 30 years from now, just for the city, not looking at, without looking any further, just the city itself, would be around 5.5 million gallons a day.
Pete, before, can you go back to that, or I change?
Absolutely. Maybe.
Just for, to keep it relative, number one and number two, what are the current total nitrogen and total phosphate? So, they can understand that, I mean, we're not currently at those levels. So, what are we currently allowed?
Well, phosphates, there is no limit on phosphates currently. Your limit, right now, your phosphates come in around six, Chris, and they basically go out about six. We don't really have anything taking out phosphates right now. Nitrate, I don't know what your, nitrate's going out? 18 going out?
So, those are significant reductions from what we've been allowed. And obviously, that would involve some kind of modification to the existing plant or alternative.
Right, it's a different process to do what they call biological nutrient removal, which removes the nitrogen phosphate biologically. You can remove it chemically, obviously, that's expensive.
So, you're saying that KDHNE is establishing these new regulations?
Yes, actually, come down from EPA. It's from the Clean Water Act from 1971. And these are now, KDHNE is putting them into play in all the future permits that are coming out.
And why are they coming down with these? Because of the algae bloom?
Right, it's all coming from EPA, but it's all, yeah. Phosphorus is what's causing algae blooms and so on in the streams and rivers and lakes. And so, they're trying to eliminate that where they can, which is cities. Farmers, no. Cities, yes.
Was there like a timeframe, we have to get this down to?
Their last comment was that they wanted us to test or to check it and have a plan in place by 2022. And then, to have, basically, how we're going to meet that for the next permit. And that's what we're talking about. When you're looking at a treatment process, going from where we are today to actually having a treatment plant opening and running, you're looking at about six years. By the time you design it, get it through KDHNE, and get it constructed, it's about a six-year process.
And how long do the permits, what's the permit?
Five years.
I guess I could have done the math.
Well, that's kind of the next step. The next step is to take a group of people to go take a look at what's available out there, what's built, get a concept of what the city of Pittsburgh would like to see. Your operators, go and talk to the other operators in the various different types of plants. Obviously, there's a lot of different headworks. Headworks are basically the front end of the plant, where you take out all your grit, where you take out all your floatables and that type of stuff. To the actual plant design itself, your biological nutrient removal type plant, what there are, there's several different options, different kinds of plants that are out there. Each has their own deals that people like. They also have a lot of problems in some of the cases. And so, it's good to hear from the operators, you know, how well are they getting, when they do have a problem, how well are they getting action to get things fixed? You know, it doesn't do you any good to buy a part or a piece of equipment that you have to wait for six months because it's made in Germany and there's no parts here in the US. And there are stuff like that out there. And so, that's what we'd like to do next, take a look at, traveling around. Anyone's welcome, as we put a group together, we start setting up through the summer, taking a look at different plants, getting an idea of what operators like and dislike, and what you guys might like for your own treatment facility. And to get together a footprint, an idea of what might work and what size that would be. Once we have a footprint, we can get an idea of where to put it and how much is it going to cost. Because obviously, that's the next step, is taking a look at cost, taking a look at a rate study to figure out what you have available, what a loan might cost, and what the interest rates are, and how would that be paid back over the timeframe? We have time, and like you said, to get this going and get to do it, so we can plan ahead. And that's kind of the idea, is to plan ahead. So, we've got an idea of where we're going down the road and what we may have to meet in the future with costs. Questions?
So, is this, and excuse my ignorance, but a total replacement of our wastewater treatment?
It would be.
Okay.
Yeah, the trickling filter right now is basically used as a process in which we try to partially treat excess infiltration water. The problem with what we have right now, and you'll see it in the bigger report, there was a report done several years ago, looking at what it would take to upgrade this plant to do nutrient removal. And the cost of that plant in today's dollars is, I don't, I could look it up, I guess. But it's, it's like 15 or 20 million dollars. Well, a new plant, similar size, we're doing one for the city of Liberal right now. It's in the final stages of design. The estimated cost is around 20 million dollars. Well, it doesn't make a lot of sense to upgrade this plant again for 18 million. You can build a brand-new one, that'll do everything for 20.
How long did you say from design to the actual new plant? How long would that take?
By the time we start, from, by the time you decide on what you want to do, it takes about five to six years. By the time you get it through KDHNE, get your loans all approved, and actually get it built. Actual construction takes between 18 months and 24 months to actually build.
And you say that you'd look for a different location close to that location, or?
Preferably close to the existing location, mainly because all your system now feeds that down there. So, yes, that would be the most opportune, is to find a place close to the existing.
And what would we do with the existing structures?
We would sell it to you. It would be dismantled eventually. You have to understand, we have to continue to treat water the whole time that we're building the new one. And so, obviously, we'd look at anything that we could reuse of the existing plant. But obviously, the stuff from 1952, pointless to even look at that. So, eventually, that would all be simply dismantled. A lot of the concrete, the rock out of the trickling filters, we reuse that a lot of times for erosion control in various areas, because it works great, crushing the concrete the same way. But, yeah, so eventually, that would be removed. And so, basically, in another 40 years, you'd have a place to build a new plant, in that location.
The nice thing about this is, or on the good side of time, we're to the advantage. Things, even some of our newest processes, we just got notified last month, like our UV disinfection, the ballast that actually run the bulbs, they discontinued those ballasts. So, that's going to be a big chunk of change. What do we figure, 250 or something? We totally scrapped it and, yeah, I mean, it's a big chunk of change, just even to replace just the ballast for the bulbs that do the UV disinfection. And that's some of our newest technology at the plant.
So, between now and six years, are we going to continue to make any improvements on the existing one? Obviously, maintain it, because we're still using it. But, we're not going to sink a whole lot of money into the one that we already have over the next six years.
We have some significant decisions to make. I think Dr. Bailey could probably speak to a scenario where we didn't just replace the entire plant, where part of it was used to do something else. You know, that's one reason we are, you know, if you're going to do this every 50 or 60 years to have two engineers, and Chris Farinacci and Matt Bacon, who are actually very good at what they're doing, and a lot of smart people to look at this, we'll give you the best scenarios, whether it's a brand-new plant, whether it's some mix, whether we use a big pond somewhere to catch stuff because it runs off. This is the very first step in taking you through a process that's going to allow you to have a good decision-making opportunities when the time comes. Because everybody has to have this, and it's never cheap. But, our goal, hopefully, isn't just to go buy a brand-new one and blow it up next door.
The estimate for a brand-new one, you said 20 million?
Right, the one we're doing right now is a city of Liberal, is about 5 million gallons a day, and that's about 20 million dollars.
Are we having any conversation with surrounding communities joining in with us, partnering?
We are always talking to other communities about how to help them. The question is, who's close enough? I mean, Gerard's over there ways, Frontenac, of course, is right to the north. We have a meeting or two scheduled the next month with the Department of Agriculture and Frontenac, and Representative Lusker and Moran to talk about their needs, our capacity, what they want to do. So, we are in conversations about, we definitely don't want to just build this for Pittsburgh right now and move on. And we also have to think about things like, we're marketing our community right now to other food processors because of the amount of water we have. So, if we were actually lucky enough to land a couple of those that were the size of Sugar Creek, how do you accommodate that? Because that's a significant lug on our waste. So, all those things are in play, and yes, we're having conversations with many people about, you know, how can we meet, you know, we only, they don't want a water treatment plant and a wastewater treatment plant every five miles in Kansas. I mean, the state's loaning them all money, so they're trying to make us work.
If you look at some of the appendices in the back of this document, you'll see the areas that we looked at, and how, what he looked at from the 69 corridor and how he came up with some of the areas that we really focused on without getting too broad of a brush.
And then, the last thing, before we get to the actual commission meeting, we're going to be talking about a land use plan. It's a critical part of this, as you think about the new corridor that's between the mall and the casino, and what could be developed on that corridor, the Broadway corridor between the university and Block 22. It, you know, planning sounds really boring, but you've got to do it because of things like this, because all these plans feed together. And until we know exactly what we're going to allow in our community and where it's going to be, we're not going to be able to make the best decisions on where the treatment plant should be and how it should operate. So, but Pete's got us off to a great start, and we've got a lot of smart people right now looking at it. So, we're in a good place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job, Pete.
Alright, so we will close out of the study session and then swing back in to the full meeting, because IT has to switch things over on their part. Do we need to vote on this part, or we just?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, well, let's close out, and then we'll.